Capitol City Council meeting for Monday, September 12th, 2022. Six fifty-nine is what I show. Everyone had a chance to look at these minutes from our previous meeting. So, any corrections or additions to that? If not, I'll take a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Lauren, second?
I'll second.
Larry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, is there anything else to the agenda we need tonight? You guys notice that we're missing? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda then for tonight.
So moved.
Taylor, second?
I'll second.
Jeff, all those in favor?
Aye.
Well, let's go straight to Bill then.
Um, I guess, maybe you have that paper in front of you.
His team left?
Yep.
Okay, I was wondering.
Yeah, this is our. Um, lagoon, when they did the testing on how much sludge there is. Um, here's a three D image of our lagoon. And you can see most of our, our sludge is around the edges, so. I mean, we got less than an average of six inches of sludge around that lagoon. There's the inlet pipe, there's gonna be a little bit more there. Which isn't a big deal, um. I don't know if you can understand this graph down here that they have. That year, that bottom one, that that would be the very first year. What it would cost to get rid of this sludge. And then after that, it'll be just that seven ninety-eight. The year, or the thousand years, year, sorry. Is what I think we should go with. Just because we got, what we have is an enzyme block in the sewer, in the lift station out there. And that helps throughout the winter, because it's hard to get to that mammal out there, because it's buried in six feet of snow. So.
So you would say that one from April, October, you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
That's kind of the one that I think we should go with. Because we don't have a huge problem here. It's very minimal. A lot of, a lot of them guys that have these two and a half acre cells, five acre cells, they got two feet of sludge in them. And that's thousands and thousands of dollars.
Did he recommend this?
Yeah, well, he recommends this, the winter blend too. But, I just, I don't think right now, we really don't need to do it. I think we should just do this, the T ninety-five, the mega bugs. Through, through it all summer, hopefully, as far as we can go into, before storms come up. Is what I think we should do.
Is this kind of preventing future problems, what you're saying?
Yeah. And the superbugs, we'll put them, we'll spread them out around in this lagoon. So that they get right into the lagoon right away, instead of going through the sewer system and then into the lagoon. That's kind of my recommendation, I guess, so.
And like this corner right here, that's where the inlet.
Yep, and that's, that's where the most of the lagoon is, is in that inlet part.
So do you come back and test every year to see how it works?
Oh, we can.
See results?
We can.
I'm just curious if that's like part of it.
Oh, but you're not gonna come back in a couple of years or something, make sure it's working?
So that would be available, having tested, right?
Yeah, it was like five hundred bucks a night, doing it down here. You know, I'm sure that would, if we get all the other towns around here too. I'm sure that we'll do it, just so that they can have some sort of test results on, on their end of it.
Well, it looks good for that too, if it works.
Right.
So what do you recommend, Bill, how often?
I don't know if you guys respond to that, any problems or questions?
Let's say for starters, yeah. It's a good idea.
There's another picture on there, I guess.
I guess everything is, try and if it's working.
Right. The guy that made that's kind of what, what it would look like, I guess. I mean, that's what we got in our home, about, about four and a half feet of reboard, which is about kind of what you want. You know, for the sun to get through there and the wind and. I mean, that takes care of a lot of the sludge, with sun and wind mainly. And then the enzymes that we pour in weekly in there.
So you would have to do this, this is just for the chemical or the?
Right. Oh, it's for what, two pounds?
Right. That would be.
Two pounds a week?
Right.
Any questions or any?
Is that in addition, no, I, I agree on some. Is that in addition to your, your block that you got out there? You got to buy that block too?
No, that's the block already out there. Now that would be on the top. You know, that, that's already paid for, whatever, this is just, this would be what we're putting directly into the lagoon.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that's something we should.
Take a motion then to approve.
I'll make that motion.
April through October, okay, Jeff, second?
Second.
Taylor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Troy Nelson approached me, he's wondering if we could get a little parking sign with this new building they bought over here. From that east overhead door to the curb. Is a care center residence, where workers are parking in front of its doors and you can't get anything out of it.
Oh, sure. Like, does he wants the city to pay for it?
Well, it's either that or he, you know, puts up a sign on his door, you know, parking.
Would, has anybody communicated with, with the care center?
He's talked to him a few times, but they still are parking there for some reason. I mean, I don't know if that would be on the city, or if that would be on the end, or, he just asked me if this, if I'd bring it up.
I don't know, I don't have a problem with putting it there, I guess, I don't know. We should be responsible or not.
Is it, is it legal? I mean, it's not, is it?
It's fine, right, it's just an empty building.
Someone parked in front of your driveway.
Well, if I, I feel a driveway right there?
I'm assuming, yes.
If I, I understand, I mean, but the street in front of it, I mean, how, are we able to do that?
Well, you can, I guess you don't have much choice, I don't think. Reading through the ordinance, it does specifically state, you know, it's illegal to block a driveway.
Right.
Well, he's, that, that whole area is driveway.
Yeah.
You know, he's got a door here, and then, probably one vehicle was fit, and then there's another door. So.
I would suggest that we devise a sign and then maybe talk to the body unit there. And just tell them that whatever's worked in the past isn't working. And maybe they can work something out, and then we'll see what, how that plays out. But I, I don't think we have to, I'm waiting the sign.
Well, yeah, I mean, as long as, as no ordinance said that we can, that you can't be with it, then go on.
I think with that driveway right there, he's got a driveway to, or, perfect way to set that.
And I'm sure some of it is, the care center residents probably don't even realize what is all transpired, that he bought it. You know, it's a change of ownership, and prior, Ivan didn't care. Troy wants to store his equipment up here, is my understanding, this winter. He wants a heat that had his equipment in there.
Well, see, I guess, yes, he either wants us to pay for him, or, you don't have a problem putting him up there, so.
Well, we got them signs up that Jeff ordered, we got all that up. We got the one over there.
Yeah, the signs are up, we asked one gentleman just south of me, or north of me. He was driving a big truck, parked in there for a bit, we just. We asked him now that the signs are up, not to go on there, so he just parks out on Main, we're up on the, on fifty-six. And I said, that's fine, overnight, whatever, just don't drive it, it didn't count.
Oh, that's not his somebody down here?
It could be, I'm not too sure, I haven't seen it. It could be over here in the.
Yeah, there's two.
There, there's two parked there, one is my neighbor across the street, and Jan's, Yager's old house, and then Dan Segman's been parking one there too.
Okay.
I forgot that gentleman's name over there.
Who's it?
You know, the kid that was dating.
Andy?
Andy Nitschke? Nitschke, yeah. It was, it was just for Troy, and we, I didn't want to say anything until the signs were up. But now the signs are up, we just asked him to buy one.
And he was cool, he moved his vehicles.
Is there gonna be any kind of fines, I mean, is it gonna be, just, you know, when somebody does it, we just tell them not to do it? Or we catch them two or three different times, or are we gonna? Well, obviously, if it's competitive, then we gotta do something about it, but so far, people that have been, were really good about.
Right.
Stayed out to rolling. But if you, if you see somebody, then.
Right.
We need to probably address that, but I haven't seen anything.
No, I haven't seen anything.
And then, is there, do we have something in the ordinance that's already, I mean, before the signs prior?
You know, I didn't read something about trucks overweight. But I don't know about penalty, I can't remember where I read it. But I'd say for now, maybe we should just hold off with the penalty portion.
Hold off, we just, yeah.
Yeah.
Give them a chance to adapt, adapt to it.
I thought that, I hate to, yeah, think that somebody would play your.
Sorry, Bill, go ahead.
No, I'm fine. Tugging Lauren a little bit, you know, there's a couple of spots that are being patched yet in town. And we're thinking maybe getting just the base, the fifty pound base, I mean, they're not.
You may have big spots or something.
Yeah, they're, you know, big spots or anything, just, you know, spots here and there.
Just the holes you're talking about.
When you, when you order them, why don't you get, make sure I know which receipt it is? Because I have a different checkbook that I will do after the street, after the street stuff.
Okay, yeah, I can do that. They come in a pallet, there's fifty bags on a pallet, and they're fourteen dollars a bag. So it'll be about, so I'm gonna bust through a pallet.
And you've ordered these before, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we went to that, hold on, we ran holes, and before they patched it, they took like sixty. If you don't get them used up in time or something, we got that hot room out there, you could put pallets in there, and you can crank that to a hundred for four, five days, and you can dry it up too.
Yeah, I think up in the shop up there too, I think we could find a corner for them. They should last all year, you know, if they don't even lose.
They just kind of get the power after a while.
Yeah. Probably can get your permission to order pallet, half a pallet.
I'd say get a pallet, any pallet.
You didn't need it.
About seven hundred bucks.
Yeah, but we can, if, do you want me to take it out of there? Because we have leftover money for the, for the streets.
I would say, yes, might as well use it up.
It's up to you guys.
Yeah, I would say get a pallet, you can always use it up, and you're still.
How's can you saw and pave it, you know? Does a cement saw work? It does.
Should yeah.
Because what we were thinking, I know there's one right over here that's about that deep. It's just sawing it nice and square, if you make a two by two square. Make a nice, because it tapers in. Just saw it square and then turn around and fill it.
Do we have a compactor or anything, do we have that type of one of them?
Like a.
Yeah, kind of.
Wait, don't know.
Keep her packed down there. Blending in here.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I think that would work good, it would kind of help them.
Yeah.
And then, I was kind of hoping, but Warren's engineering would have been here, um. Just thinking about getting a price, or see if there's any sort of grant out there too. This would be a big project, but to replace that AC pipe going out to the wellhouse. We have AC pipe from the wellhouse all the way to town. You know, just can, see if there didn't be any grant money out there, for that sort of thing. If that'd be something we want to do in the future. Get it right from the old and.
Is that collapsing or plugging or anything?
No, it's not collapsing, it's just. The old AC pipe.
Preventative maintenance?
I don't know exactly how they ran it either, when they're coming into town, if they ran underneath that spool. Or if they start to angle it more to the east.
Going up around the pipe.
Because it comes in on the east side of Owens there, where it comes into the town now.
Isn't that, that is above the sewer line behind Noah Hunter, isn't it? Probably quite that far over.
The water line? No, don't go quite that far over.
Do you got the number, if you could give them a call?
I can give them a call.
Okay, see what he comes up with?
Yeah.
I'm sure, obviously, it won't be done this year anymore.
No, no.
And if you ask the gentleman on the end down here, he'll do it for nothing. Look and see if he can find a grant.
Oh.
Done, yeah.
I got a couple, I'm pretty sure.
He won't charge us like the other one.
He volunteered anytime we need it.
Right.
You might want to help, we're finding grants, but.
I'm afraid, right, if it was, give us trouble.
Yeah, contact Warren, if they, they know it's all about, and he can get that grant.
That's for that asbestos pipe, if that actually has asbestos.
Okay. Great. And the city is responsible for it? The city is responsible all the way out there for it?
Yeah.
Now you're gonna be on those grants.
At least that's all I have.
Then, uh, let's cover that drainage ditch. I got a bill from Dennis Meyer. And, I broke it down. He had it all lumped together, kind of, but. The actual drainage ditch down there was, I thought you better write it. It's like thirty-four hundreds. There you go. The actual drainage, what Dennis did. Because he started, we were just gonna lower that end, but that didn't work. That whole culvert was out of whack. And then they had curves in it. And, after we started digging, we just decided finally to remove the whole thing and start over from scratch. And, uh, where they made the curve, they had an opening about, it was about an inch and a half. Those culverts weren't even together, they were just kittywampus. So.
Is that city property?
Yeah. I think it is.
We're talking about that down there by, uh, Pat's?
Pat's.
Pat had somebody do it before, Guff Miller?
Guff Miller, didn't he?
And he failed miserably?
Yeah, he actually has it so. So he dug the whole thing out, now it's just one straight line.
Yeah, no, it looks great.
And, um. The other thing I was gonna mention. The whole bill was forty-nine seventy, but, there was fifteen hundred and forty bucks that he, that clay evacu. That he'll have, had started taking clay away from. And Dwight asked if we could slope it, which was the intent from the beginning. So Dennis sloped it, we finished taking it out, we got rid of the clay up to the co-op. And then we sloped it. So that was fifteen hundred bucks. Thirty-two was the culvert. And then he went down for the county water supply. They wanted a hole dug, so they could bore the water line. And that was two hundred and ten bucks. And that would be on our end too, so. I didn't give these numbers to Pat yet. I did tell him, and he's willing to cost share, but. And then also, we had to buy one piece of pipe, we hit it and ruined it, and that was eight hundred and seven bucks. And, um. It's.
You're killing me. You're too honest, Lauren. I would have never said it. We hadn't replaced one, but no reason.
Just had to take them all away.
Well, that day, they was turning faster than we thought it was. And what was the other part of it, gentlemen? Oh, S and S gave me an estimate. When I was there with, um, we were thinking of just sloping it and pouring out valley morless, with those two culverts. They don't, you know, they're about fourteen feet apart. Rick had a good point. If we get a heavy rain, that water is gonna be swirling. And a little kid especially, he fell in there, and sucked him right into that pipe. He wouldn't have a chance. So we came up with the idea, he said, actually, probably would be cheaper, just pour a vault. And then we put a grate on top. We could, would make the grate, the city would just even weld it up.
Rebar.
And then we could just lift that grate off, and we have to get in there to clean out. And then the water coming from the east and from the west, would have to run through that grate. And that estimate was six thousand two hundred and twenty-five. And they said they can't do it this year.
So what do you got, you gotta worry about sediment, you gotta make it big enough for sediment and stuff to get through there? Tree leaves stuck in it.
Thought you were gonna line up with big rock?
You know, we thought of that, but you know what happens with rock?
You know, just dump that old ditch out.
Yeah, and then it fails, after a couple of years, you got a mess on your hands.
So you were just coming through the side of that vault, and then you just wanted grate for the top, not the sides of it?
Right.
The corners would be in.
Oh, okay.
So there would be room, you know, I'm sure there's gonna be some traction, shit, you know, that would, yeah.
And for this year, I was just gonna make a grate with angle iron and rebar. So the skunks can't crawl in. And build a nest in there. And we just put it on each side of that, just to cheap you, to set it up again.
Actually, put an iron string up there.
So I think, it's just, to give you the numbers.
That's what we're doing for the typing, you know?
And then we can decide, um. This way, if we wanna be the cement part of it.
And we, you did check on that, and that money that we got from?
The grant money we can use for this, if we need to.
The.
It just takes away off more meters.
Stuff that we're just kind of holding for next year to see what we need. That would be under there, if we needed to. Take it from there.
Why don't we just hold off, she paid, Sherry paid Ferguson for that pipe, that's paid. But why don't we hold off with Dennis's bill? And I'll meet with Pat.
As long as Dennis is okay with it, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, he did. And he said we can't afford to all leave, write off some, but I don't think.
Well, if not, I mean, we could pay it and then deal with Pat too, you know, if he wants to, whatever he wants to, at least so Dennis can pay. Because he's helped us a lot, that's pretty damn cheap if Dennis.
There's money in the check account to pay him, right?
That would be, in my opinion, just pay him and then we'll, Pat's obviously willing to work with us, I don't think there's gonna be a problem there, did you?
Yes.
So what's the total I need to send to Dennis, the third, the whole?
I'll, I'll give you.
You'll give me that, that board?
I'll give you just copy, if you keep it.
Or did you have some, I just, like I said?
I'll just get a piece.
Dennis has done a lot for us. My opinion, but.
Actually, you can keep that one, or keep it all together for that sewer, in case you got more. I've got a copy of that. We're sending the whole now, because you broke it down into three different things.
Yeah.
And I think that's it, on that.
Anything else for Bill, you guys?
Uh, oh, sorry, I gotta order a fire hydrant, a hydrant up there by the shop up there. He cannot turn on. Tom and I both on the thing, we couldn't get that thing to turn.
By which, by the city channel?
I'll, I'll fire it by the hydrant up there. Where I, all orders at and stuff up there.
Okay.
Maybe I should come turn it.
You can drive if you want.
Says the guy with the panel. I don't wanna break it off.
Well, I guess that hasn't been working for quite a few years, and I wasn't aware of it, but I think it'd be a little embarrassing. We had a fire up there, and found out we don't have a hydrant that don't work. Or if residents would find out.
And that's our responsibility, though.
We got another one in town over here that, for one where you're flushing, we have parts coming out of it, so. We got the new parts here. Got Nathan down here, he'll get it fixed, so, I'll get that one up and running pretty soon.
Okay, yeah, I would say get that one up there done sooner than later, so, okay. All right, Audrey?
All right, the conversion is done with the new billing system, from U B Pro to the small businesses. I did my schooling last weekend, the week before. So the new bills, we'll have whole new bills that come out. Two of the meters, Bill and I figured out which one they're gonna put on, because we gotta test them by shooting them out that way, if they come back to my computer, you know, those handheld ones. So that's all that matters. So, been working on that. I think that's, all the tax assessments that need to go to Logan County are all done and heading over there. I had to put a hole to it, because I had two people, two more people pay half of it. So I had to go back and redo some, but other than that, they're all ready to be turned in. And then we have a couple, I think it's two residents, I'll put bills on there. And a bill for a back boost, when the, one of the residents had a pipe at first and they couldn't afford it. So those will also go up for the tax roll. And then I'll just need to get y'all to vote on the mill levees to stay the same. So that way I can put that in here.
Well, we can do that now, if you want.
Yeah.
Did you have a sheet or something?
No, oh, I didn't bring that with me, because we had, said we were just gonna leave the mills the same, instead of going up, we went up last year, and. Why not, why, we went up on everything else too.
Okay, any questions on that mill levees?
Now we did it last year, it sounds like.
Okay, take a motion to approve that then, so mill levees to stay the same.
Move to.
Lauren, second?
I'll second.
Jeff, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I think that's it for me.
Uh, Taylor, you got anything? Jeff?
Not that we've already discussed.
Okay. Larry?
No.
Lauren, you got anything?
Nothing.
Okay. All right, old business, uh, we got the decisions on the chickens done. Uh, Moore Engineer to discuss project. That's done, permits.
Were they gonna be here tonight?
Um, they, one went out on vacation, they both went off on vacation, so they, they sent their stuff to me, and I gave it to Drew for motions.
Uh, Nicole Segman Privacy Fence, got that, David Paulson, home improvement, three windows. New business, uh, approved the last bill for the street project from Moore Engineer. I'll just, I won't be able to answer, answer too much, but if you guys have any questions, I can sure call them next week or something, but. That's real, all the work's done, uh, within the project that they bid for us, starting today. There's a one year warranty on anything, so if you guys see anything, or anything that needs to be addressed, sooner than later, I guess, we've got a year on that. Project did come in thirteen thousand under budget, so that's why we have a change order tonight. That we have to approve, and that's a final balancing change order. To revise the contract amount, to reflect the final installed quantities based on actual field measurements. Um, so we need a motion to approve a change order number three for minus twenty-five thousand eight seventy-three seventeen. Move. Lauren, second?
Second.
Taylor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then the new payment, uh, contractor's application, payment number eight, uh, releasing maintenance from the payment application. Uh, we need a motion to approve contractor's application for payment number eight, for fifteen thousand three oh two sixty-three. Need a motion. Uh, so we, it was before the twenty-five thousand, so we, has a change order, and now it's fifteen, it's a little less than what they expected.
I'll make that motion.
Jeff? Uh, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then there's one more engineering invoice, and this is gonna be for the water, all the stuff they had to draw for that project down at the park, for all that. I can't, I don't even notice, it's like that five or ten year plan, or whatever. So that one, we need, uh, invoice for construction, additional street design project. Request motion to approve engineering invoice three zero nine eight eight for nine thousand. Move. Taylor? Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, aye, sorry, the storm sewer study.
Yeah.
That's what I was looking for. And we need to get. Did he tell you about the three, I thought he said you.
Yeah, he, he gave me two of them, I'm waiting for calls back to see if they have openings.
We need to get, yeah, our last three audits completed to be reimbursed for that nine thousand then. Cause that was a fifteen thousand, we got reimbursed and it cost twenty, is that right? And I think that's it for that, if you guys have any questions or anything, let me know, I can give you.
Did they say like warranty will cover patching too? Like where the patch, where they did all the patching? I'd say that's where your guy's gonna have the most trouble. I was just curious.
You know, I'm not sure on that. I would say we'd have a year of, wouldn't you? Did he tell you all bill in there? Cause I think they would warranty their patching too, I mean.
I hope so, I just think that's where your guy's gonna have. And you gotta do a good enough job on your patches, maybe you can get them covered under warranty.
I won't give her one year warranty. Tell her I guarantee you.
We'll see how that goes right though. Okay, so that should be it for that then, so we're good on there then, guys?
Yeah.
Questions from insurance company?
Um, we'll just leave that for now, cause I talked to a couple of Lauren. And he gave me most of the answers that I needed. It's just a bunch of crazy questions that our insurance company now wants to have. So we kinda went over it, answered what we could, and we just gotta get with the part where.
Okay.
Yeah, it was like water usage.
Utility bills, um. Do we have this, do we have that, do we have that, it's just insurance ones now.
Okay, and then resident asked about dog barking ordinance.
Well, all it says in the ordinance is that shall be unlawful to keep or harbor within the city any dog or cat that disturbs the peace by howling, barking, whining, meowing. Or making other disagreeable noises. Any person wishing to file a complaint shall be required to give his name and address and sign a complaint. And it really doesn't say, but I thought law enforcement are the ones that carry the.
As long as it's in the ordinance, yeah.
Take the complaint. That we really don't have anything to do with it. And then it does say that a revision is October fourth of ninety-nine. The following fines were set for any violation of the above ordinance. First offense, verbal warning, if not lightened, a lation must be purchased in addition to the twenty-five dollar fine. Second offense is a twenty-five dollar fine. Third offense is fifty dollar fine.
So it's each complaint?
Is that just for a dog to bark? Oh my goodness.
Don't bother.
Don't let that guy out here.
Drew's gonna be busy.
So we had a lot of complaints in ninety-nine, I see.
We did.
Mostly when the signers go down.
About six oh one the line. So you're, what you're saying is they gotta file a complaint with Andrew then?
Yeah.
That's for Kyle.
Was all my understanding, actually, we can't. Accept a complaint, the law enforcement has to do that.
Okay.
They make the call.
Okay. Well, then I guess, I don't know who it was, but.
Well, I took the call.
Okay, so let them know they got it.
And that's what I told him, I says. You've gotta talk to the sheriff.
Yeah.
And file a complaint, and he asked me if we had any ordinances. And I said, I'm sure we do, I don't know what they are right at this moment, but I'm sure Andrew, if he doesn't know, he can get ahold of the municipal judge and.
Yeah, right.
But we need to talk to, talk to, uh, deputy for the sheriff, yeah.
Okay.
We have, I think he said he called Andy.
Okay.
I said, that's what you gotta do.
And then as long as we're on ordinance, you know, a lot of people have asked. About like they wanna put up a building, how far they gotta stay from the property line and stuff. And I was always, if I remember correctly, told three feet. And that includes the overhang. I read through this, I cannot find a single place where it gives a measurement. It doesn't mention nothing. The only thing I'm wondering in chapter fourteen here, all it says is refer to state building code only.
I was gonna say, there's gotta be a state code on it. And. There is obviously a limit, you can, there has to be.
I just don't see why.
Defense, you can't put it directly on the line.
Well, there's a point of sight too, you know, there's a height. You know, if on corners and what have you. You know, in addition to that, you know, can impede the intersections and what have you. But I checked with the state code on that.
Especially if you're snow.
Or building codes.
It's a standard. If you get snow piling up on next to the building. Somebody's gonna have all the snow in the yard, it's right on the line. I'm sure there's something.
Um. Do you guys want me to talk to Isaac? Start there?
See what the state buys?
I'm sure there's gotta, yeah.
I don't see why.
Talk to the contractor, you know, whether it be Infinity or, I mean, they'll know, I mean, there's gotta be some.
I. Like yesterday Troy Nelson told me like in Fargo, he didn't know about a building. He thought it was ten or twelve feet. But. Privacy fence, there's an exception, that can be right on the property line. And he said, the reason, I guess, is because. If you're a foot off the property line. When you're mowing on the opposite side of that fence, you're mowing on the neighbor's properties.
I can see a property line, but I mean, this part of the road, you know, whatever, I mean. When your property lines.
I see that too, it's, a lot of them share fences. Fargo insurance.
Right.
Yeah.
You have two feet that's unmowed or unmanaged. I don't know.
Round it up.
But I think we should try to get something in.
I'd try to find an assistant.
Yeah, cause we have.
Cause he would be able to find out for us then. If you wanna do that. Go from there.
I gotta talk to him.
If we gotta adopt it, yeah, I guess so. Okay.
Okay.
And maybe he's got the short answer, just there's a, in the century code or something, I don't know.
Maybe there's something that, you know, we don't, I don't know if we wanna get in with the whole. Building code, because boy, that gets involved with zoning and all this other garbage.
I understand.
And it gets so involved. Where maybe we could just have a short part of it.
Right. Okay.
Something to get.
Okay, uh, we got a final, sorry, you got them done, okay. Uh, final budget get voted on in October's meeting.
Oh, your October meeting, I will hand you.
Oh, sorry.
I'll give it to you about a week beforehand, you'll look at it and then.
So we don't need anything to make with that?
No, no.
All right, and then we got some building permits to approve for Troy Nelson for some remodeling. In his building, and Jeb High remodeling house. Move to approve the building permits. Lauren, second? Third, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna go to your house.
Just meditation.
Oh, nice.
Taking a little about ten feet.
All right, uh, so those are approved. Uh, the only thing we got left then before we approve the bills. Is Taylor's since he's moved. Out of town to new residents. Is no longer gonna be able to be on the council, so just. Yeah, if you just wanna read your letter, then we'll have to, to accept it, I guess.
To the city of Gacko and fellow council members, members, it is with regret that I must give my resignation as city council member. However, now that I'm moving out of the city limits of Gacko, it is only right to do so. I have enjoyed my time spent sitting at this table and I'm proud of the accomplishments we have made. I trust everyone here will continue to serve with the best interest of our beloved town at heart. And I know that I leave here with the community in capable minds and hands. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve, and I will continue to serve my community as best I can, for this will forever be mine.
Thank you, thanks for getting on with us. Move to approve the resignation. Lauren, second?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got something like there was some.
That was. You didn't give us a choice there. Yeah, thanks again for my help, just help, we sure appreciate it, and I'm here. Yeah. We'll have to change some stuff, so we can. Yeah, you better come.
Not that I was gonna say, we could just kinda. Little run for hours, could have used some water. Well, I got a little on her.
Let's see, everyone get a chance to look at the, the bills for tonight?
I didn't see anything that was standing out issued. Double J, what day, what day is you on?
That was for the pressure washers.
Without share. We had, we went in three ways, ambulance, fire department and city. So we paid a third for a pressure.
Pressure wash.
Big old pressure, is it a big old pressure?
That's big.
What kind is it?
Landit?
North Star.
North Star?
Ed Duro.
You went to the Van Can store and you get a pressure. Harbor Freight.
All right, that's not, we'll take a motion to approve. Bills for tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills for tonight.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, date and time of next meeting, October third at seven. Anyone have any issues with that?
October what?
Third.
It's on a Monday.
Well, and that we will.
Oh, that'll be fine.
All right. Uh, take a motion to adjourn.
What time is it?
Seven.
So move. Lauren, second?
Second.
Seven forty-one. All those in favor?
Aye.